Ready. This is the meeting officially ordered. This is the Monday, November 9th, Pompa City Public School Board meeting. Would you like to join in? Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right.
Pray with me. Father, we are thankful for all the lessons you've bestowed on us. Please be with our country as we transition with a new leadership. They have their hands full with world problems, not to mention COVID-19. We also ask that you hold close all those who are still without power from the ice storm. Help them with their needs. I know they appreciate it in my way. COVID-19 challenges us in many ways. We ask that you be with all those who have suffered from this pandemic. Give our scientists the strength to know how to come up with a viable vaccine or cure soon. We are thankful for our soldiers, who not only are currently serving, but those who have served or gave the ultimate sacrifice for our country. We ask this in your name.
You say it, please. And from the role.
Dr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
This is true. Yes, sir. Here.
And we have four presidents, therefore we do have a quorum. Next on the agenda is the presentation of Employee of the Month, Friends of Education Award. The first is the certified employee of the month, which goes to Catholic Bible, Assistant Principal of West Middle School. Great.
Betty, can you pull up this superintendent's report? It's got the pictures on there to start out with.
This Bible is a fantastic employee who deserves Employee of the Month for her infectious, positive attitude, consistent cheerleading, and ability to lend a hand to better the lives of the students at West Middle School. This Bible goes out of her way to support the teachers. Her door is always open if teachers need a moment to vent or a pout in the back. In our current times of distress and unknown as profession, people like this Bible are how we function with smiles on our faces. She brings her A-game every day and treats everyone as if their problem is the most important problem at the time. She is truly an asset to the staff and students of West Middle School. Congratulations, Miss Bible.
Next will be the Support Employee of the Month, Brandy Turner, Child Nutrition Program of Washington Pre-K.
We are so proud that our very own Brandy Turner represents DCPS as the Support Employee of the Month in November. Brandy goes beyond the call of duty. She volunteered the first week of school to come in before her shift to help escort students to class. Last year she came in early and rented students. She helps out in whatever way is needed. She wipes down tables or cleans up messes when we are behind or short staff. Brandy gets to know students by name and always encourages them to eat and try new foods. She is loving and nurturing and truly cares for our students. Brandy is friendly and it shows in her attitude that she loves working with children. Brandy takes time to pop in the office to see if there's anything she can do to help out. She's the first one to jump in without hesitation to comfort or encourage a student. She is a valuable member of the Washington family, and we are grateful to have her. Congratulations, Brandy.
Brandy. And finally, we have the Friend of Education, Kylie Hughes and the family who are supporters of DCPS.
Ms. Kylie Hughes and her family have dedicated multiple hours at East Middle School in the clothes closet, getting it arranged where it was. They shop for it. Shopper-friendly. They spent countless hours sorting and moving clothes that were outdated for the age or otherwise inappropriate. They arranged by size, gender, and labeled sections using their own money for items needed to make these arrangements possible. As they cleaned and sorted clothing, they noticed that there were a few items of certain sizes and inquired if students were needing those sizes. There were several students needing clothing items that were not available in those sizes. Kylie took it upon herself to help those students. With her resources, she was able to help students find clothing, shoes, and jackets. These shoes made many students happy and placed smiles upon their faces. She sees a problem in the community and uses her resources, helps to reduce or eliminate the issue. Her leadership and caring personality makes her and her family great assets to Friends of Education. Thank you, Ms. Kylie Hughes and family. You and your family are a great example of the Wildcat way in our community. Thank you for supporting Team Pompa.
Thanks to all three of the recipients. Betty, I assume we had no public comments?
No.
Okay, next on the agenda will be the college remediation reports that I believe is very, Mrs. Hawkins will talk about.
That will be Ms...Dr. Hawkins.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am here to present the college remediation data for the graduating class of 2018. This data is based on the Oklahoma State Regents for Education Report. It's an annual report based on our 2018 graduates and their first year, first-time college. So, in our remediation percentages, Kohai, it's broken down to science, English, math, and reading. On the left, you'll see Kohai, and on the right, you'll see the state of Oklahoma. Our science was zero, and the state was .2. English, 21 percent. The state, 14.4 percent. Math, 5.6 percent, and the state is 26.4 percent. And reading, 21.8 percent, and the state, 6.6 percent. These are the percentage of our first-time freshmen in college who had to take remediation courses in those subjects. The next slide, our comparables of a couple of schools, high schools, similar to our size and demographics. So, on the left, again, you'll see Pompa City, Enid, English, similar. Stillwater, much less in English, and Choctaw toward the middle. Math, we've got 5.6 percent. Enid jumps us there with math remediation courses for their college freshman. Stillwater, 3.7, and Choctaw, 29 percent, much higher, and similar to the state's math remediation for college freshmen as well. And then in reading, we and Enid, they're a bit higher than we are for reading remediation of their college freshmen. Stillwater is less, and Choctaw is significantly less. So, K County, where do we measure up with our college, our freshmen who need remediation in college in the subject area, specifically reading? This one is only reading for our region. The state, again, was 6.6 percent of first-time college freshmen needed reading remediation in college. Pompa City was 21.8, New Kirk, 25 percent, Blackwell, 24, and Tompawatt, 24.1. So, we are less than the schools in our region for reading remediation in college. So, additional information, again, this data is based on remediation course requirements of first-time freshmen on ACT results. Whether or not a student who has graduated Pompa City High School needs remediation in college or not is based on their ACT results. If they score below an 18 or 19, depending on the college they decide to go to, they may have to take a remediation course. This was 124 were our first-time freshmen from graduating class of 2018 enrolled in, which may or may not include our concurrent students through high school. They are not considered first-time freshmen because they previously taken college courses through high school. NOC, our regional high school that serves the needs of the regional, our regional college, I'm sorry, that serves the needs of most of our regional high schools, as well as Stillwater and Enid, they have no opportunity for a science remediation course. So, if a student scores below an 18 on their science portion or their reading portion of their ACT, they will take a remediation course in reading for both of those subjects, which could inadvertently cause our reading remediation scores to increase. In the year 2017-18, we did have 578 Pompa City High School students, 51.7 of which were economically disadvantaged, that participated in post-secondary opportunities while they were in high school. That would be Pioneer Tech or Career Tech, Advanced Placement Coursework, internships, and concurrent enrollment. However, you know, we're not pleased. We can do better. We know that, and so we're making efforts to do better with our reading and our English scores and to reduce those numbers of our graduates who need remediation in college. And a few of the efforts we're making are the Reading Plus program. We now have all high school students enrolled in the Reading Plus program through their English courses, which is research-based and proven to improve fluency and comprehension of students' reading ability. We have ACT prep. We use ACT Bootcamp. Those are based on pre-ACT 9 or pre-ACT 10 data and the scores of students as they take those preliminary assessments in the years before the junior year when they take the ACT. And then we've also worked and are continuing to work in our POCs with the alignment of college and career readiness standards to curriculum maps and instruction. Do you guys have any questions?
Reading Plus, we've had that for a year or so, ma'am.
Yes. Last year was the first year.
And then we didn't take the ACT.
Are we getting results? Because obviously, English and reading don't match up with science and math.
Yes, I brought you some Reading Plus data that we have. This year is our most enrolled. We have 1,284 students enrolled in Reading Plus. We have had, 236 students have seen a 1.2 grade level increase in their reading levels. So, it does give us great data that we are seeing results now. We haven't had an ACT since implementing Reading Plus. So, as far as that being the indicator of showing improvement in our reading scores on the ACT, we're not there yet because the ACT was canceled last year. But we are seeing it in the Reading Plus program.
I see it every year. I still don't like it that Stillwater leases and everything.
I know.
But I would understand why Stillwater's so much better.
Well, that's one of the individuals I spoke with because they're very unhappy with some of their principal there. They're seeing some of the statewide data. Our math remediation is far, far lower than state data, and our reading is a bit higher. It's flip-flopped. So, we're trying to figure that out as to what's going on with ours being flip-flopped, this region being flip-flopped compared to the state results.
Wouldn't there also some confusion about what colleges consider remediation needed or not needed? Some of the ones that we go to do, some don't. I mean, that muddies it, and it's hard to get an apples-to-apples comparison, depending on what school you go to do that.
You're exactly right. The data is dependent on the college, what they consider unique, and what they offer as far as remediation goes.
Anybody else have any questions?
They're gonna fire up the ACT next year. They're gonna have ACT. You'll take it next year. Have you heard them say?
We are preparing, and as far as I've heard from any state indicators, yes, it is planned.
Okay.
That is Joy Hoffmeister's intention, to move right along with state testing. So, now, if we're able to do that, it's still, as of this 10 seconds, we don't know, you know, get number one to crowds. We'll see. We'll see how things work out. But the state board has no intention of closing school. It'll be district decisions.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report with potential more discussions concerning COVID-19.
Let me drop that word. Your answer's okay. No worries. Okay. There we go. Okay, so we gotta get through the awards. So, I'm gonna give you a COVID update. I'm gonna start with our COVID alert risk level based on our SDE criteria on the number of new cases per rolling average per K County. And I will tell you, there is no way to calculate what that risk factor is going to be, and no one at the State Department of Health can tell me how it's calculated. We've tried everything. We can get close, but we can't guess it. This week, we did increase, and it comes out on Friday morning at 11:30, and it's based on the previous day. So, November 5th, we were 27.9. It was an increase from October 29th, from 22.3, Orange 1 moderate risk, and we jumped up to Orange 2 moderate risk. And we definitely felt it last week with Pompa City Public Schools, it increased. In fact, we felt it so much that we thought the increase would be even greater. And then you probably heard on the news that there were some backlogs of new cases reported with the Oklahoma State Department of Health. And was it on Sunday that it came out, 4,700 new cases? And then they had a new system, they were faxing some in, sending some reports in digitally. They reduced it by 200. Today, nothing came out. They were going to give their system a chance to catch up, but I think on two days, K County alone was 91, and that's one of our highest weekly totals. And I am telling you, we felt it over the weekend, today, and last week as well. So, we still are in-person instruction for this week because as of Friday, our cases were pretty isolated to buildings, but that essence changed. So, I'll provide you that data. You may have seen the weekly update that I put out every Sunday. We had a total school positive cases of 15 throughout the district last week, 236 close contacts, 251 affected. I will tell you, we had more than 251 affected today only at Kohai. Worst-day record since we have begun. Okay, here are our total quarantine and isolation count as of 5 o'clock PM today. And I will tell you, we were scrambling up until that button, up until 5 o'clock. I finally just had to draw a line to get prepared for tonight where we are. You can check out the staff cases. And our percentages district-wide are horrible. The first section in yellow, staff cases, all the way down at our sites, 3.13 percent. And when I say a case, that means a quarantine, all right? Close contacts. Then next, we have positive isolations. Those are cases. So, of our staff, as of 5 o'clock today, we have six positive isolations in effect, which is not even 1 percent of our staff. But as of 5 o'clock today, we have three who are pending testing results. So, that number can jump up over 1 percent depending on the outcome of those test results. So, if you move over next, we have student cases. Close contacts at the high school alone, 310, and then you can look all the way down. District-wide for students, 9.75. So, about 10 percent of our students are affected district-wide. And then I'm gonna show you by site in just a few minutes. Our positive isolations in effect, these are in effect currently. We have still some that are out there. This is as of 11:09, these are like new cases. So, we have 18 at 41 percent, 12 alone at the high school, and then we have three pending results at different sites, and you can take a look at that. District-wide total with staff and students were over 5,000. So, staff and students, nearly 9 percent are out on a quarantine. They're a close contact. And not even half a percent are out as positive tests and isolation. So, 24, and then six, we do not know the answer to just yet. So, here's our site percentages, and this is where it really tells you a lot. So, as far as staff goes, let's just take a look at staff. It tells you the number of close contacts, the positive isolations, and the percentages. And then I highlighted in red the highest percentage and highlighted in green the lowest percentages. Right now, we have four out at Garfield, but it is one of our lowest staff. We have very, it's our lowest number other than Wildcat Academy is one of our sites. So, there are only 27, so with four people out, that's 14.81, I believe that is. And then we have some who have none out, Wildcat Academy. Lincoln has no staff out. Washington Pre-K has no staff out. The other would be like departments, CMP, transportation, this office, maintenance. So, we do have some out on other. Now, here's the big one. As far as our students, we have 310 students out at Kohai currently. That number went up about 250 today, maybe about 210. Curtis, do you have that exact number?
The exact number is 310 right now.
310, but how much did we increase today alone?
Oh, like today, we increased 188.
Okay.
Oh, well, 203 if you count all of them, so yeah.
Okay, all right. So, we have 12 positive isolations in effect at the high school. So, our percentage out is 24.42. That is significant. In previous weeks, the highest we've had out at Kohai, I believe, maybe we got to 9 percent. Curtis, can you pull up your trend data? I don't think.
Yes. The highest we got out at any one site today is 7 percent.
Okay.
And that was a, we got 8 percent, that's at Garfield.
Okay, right.
We had Garfield staff, which we got.
And it was pretty low numbers.
That number is up to 26.42 right now.
Oh, since 5 o'clock? Okay, so it has increased just 26.42. Here's something that's not considered into effect. 12 percent of our enrollment at Kohai are virtual. Now, some of those students are on quarantine, but if you consider 26 percent plus the 12 percent that aren't there, that's nearly 40 percent of our kids that aren't there. And when you think about this, our teachers, they've got traditional teaching and distance learning teaching, and it's gonna be a struggle to do either one very well. So, with so many out. We've got one back there shaking their head. Roosevelt has our lowest number of students out. So, if you look comparatively, the next highest ratio as far as students out, we're not in trouble on staff. We had nine staff out at Kohai. It was manageable, but all hands on deck. I mean, there were a lot of unfilled at the high school today. Next, as far as staff would be, well, Garfield, they're managing just fine. We actually had to move a counselor over to help out at split time there, but they do a good job of managing, and it's a relatively small school. East is next, was 14.5, but they only have 48 kids out. Now, that's a high percentage when you only have 331, but they only have one staff member out. So, they're managing well. This is the first positive physically in East. Now, we had an activity that was connected to East early on, but this is the first positive at East, and this was late Friday. It might have been after 4:00. I can't remember.
It was.
It was late Friday, right? We didn't know about it until after we got back on Friday. So, any questions about our site percentages?
Can you predict the next couple of days?
Let me show you.
Do you have others?
Yeah.
In testing?
We don't have two. As far as the high school, it's, this is the first time we've had widespread at any site. All the cases have been pretty isolated. Another thing that I want to share about the high school, we have multiple activities out. Band, third of band, all the cheer, all of the high steppers, all the wrestling, girls' basketball, girls' soccer.
Girls' soccer or boy's soccer?
Girls' soccer.
Softball.
Softball.
Or boy's soccer.
We don't have boy's soccer out, do we?
Nope, not today.
Maybe there's something coming we don't know about then.
That number just went up, over your saying?
I thought it was boy's soccer, not girls' soccer.
No, it's girls.
No, it's girls.
Or girls.
Yeah, all the girls are out. So, up to eight activities right now that the whole group is down. Band was only a third because I'm telling you, they have studied the aerosol spread, and they were divided into three rooms for rehearsal and practice, so we only had to lose a third at the band. As of today, we've got kids on their third and fourth quarantine at Kohai, which if they're on their fourth, that means they've been out of school eight weeks. How many weeks have we been in? 11? So, they've been in school three weeks. So, right now, I would say that it's widespread at the high school without a shadow of a doubt. It was tough, and you might have questions for Delanna in regard to the high school, but I know they've made calls all day long.
But on the downside, one kid infected can take out a bunch.
When they're in activities, yes.
On fourth team because of activities.
If they are not in activities, the average is about 30 in the classes at the high school. Of course, at the elementary schools, we closed the whole classroom because of the viral load, staying together all day. But if there's an activity involved, we had three positives that were involved in activities that 160? Just three? Yeah.
Four. We had four.
Three, I know, were 160. So, three positives, and we had up to 203 today. So, it makes a big difference on the activities.
There was a little bit of, there was a part of the overlap on that. We had.
True.
Eight cases between Friday and today. Never seen that big of a jump.
At Kohai.
Not on site. And it's not happening all across the city, so it's, that's the part that's concerning. It's not like it's happening here, here, or here, just in one building right now.
Is there any way to know if quarantined students are coming down from other students?
Yes.
Possibly.
We sort those out by if they're quarantined, they come up sick, or they're involved in quarantine, and then there are those that.
Or is that a family quarantine? I mean, I'm trying to determine, are students causing other students to come down positive?
I don't.
Not if we isolate. You don't know what would happen if they weren't quarantined.
We're pretty efficient about it, about getting them out, and so I really can't say that. I've seen any group quarantined, there's been a lot of cases within that quarantine group.
But we have had some in our activities where multiples.
There have been activities, but it's not like, it's, I don't really know for sure. There's no evidence of that, I can see.
And, you know, the superintendent, the superintendent sat with the state epidemiologist, and one of the concerns were, you know, we're quarantining but not seeing a lot move to positive, and he said, "That's why we're quarantining." So, we're not moving more to positives. So, you know, we kind of talked to him about changing the distancing and expectations, and it was a no-go. We still are to follow the strict protocols, but they said they would continue to study the science, and if there's a change, he would let us know. So, it's pretty rampant right now around the county. Other county schools are closed district-wide. Okay, so, Mr. Riley asked, what do you anticipate might be happening? Okay, so, I do believe that Halloween haunted us, but we predicted for sure two weeks after fall break. If you'll take a look at 9/7, which was Labor Day, I've got it highlighted in yellow, exactly two weeks after, we had six straight days of positives. Fall break ended on 10/19. I've got the 16th and 19th highlighted in yellow. Take a look at that. Exactly six days. Now, based on what we've seen today, I'm not sure I think we're gonna have a green day tomorrow, no positives. You know, I don't know. I don't know what's out there. It's, this is the highest it's been, our trends have been. So, after 52 days, we've had 26 days of no positives and 26 days of positives. But there's a definite pattern after a holiday. You do know we have Thanksgiving coming up, and then we'll have Christmas. What might help us at Christmas with gatherings is there's some time afterwards so that kids are not contagious if they won't gather in large group settings, and that's a problem for us. We don't have, we can control what's in school. We don't have, we can control what's in school. Okay, here's our trend data. Um, so this is our staff, close contact, contacts and our, and positives and our students. And it's calculated at the end of every week. And our highest week was nine twenty-five, two weeks after, the end, the Friday after, the two weeks after, um, Labor Day. It's seven point four-nine with close contacts and point four-three, so almost eight percent. And then our lowest was right before Halloween at one point oh seven. Last week, we saw a pickup. So our trend was five point two plus point three, so five and a half. I can tell you that last time I looked at five o'clock, we were at eight point three-three. And that's just Monday. So we've got, is that still accurate, Curtis, if you look on your?
Two point eight-nine.
Okay, so it's gone up obviously. So we are going to surpass our weeks total for nine twenty-five on Monday. So that the trend data will not be calculated until Friday for this week. So it's yet to be determined, but it will be our highest week. Uh, peer school comparisons, I'll just take, have you take a look at this. I've tracked this since August sixth and, um, I track Pompa City, Bardlesville, Enid, and Stillwater. Not necessarily because they're our peers as far as our demographics and things like that, but they're six A schools in northern Oklahoma. So, um, you can see, we, we held our own up until, uh, September tenth. Uh, Bardlesville's kind of been up and down. Enid has been steady at Orange Two and Orange One. They're going back and forth. Stillwater reached a red two weeks in a row, September tenth and September seventh. They came back down the week of Oc- October twenty-ninth, which was a low week for us in the district. Paint County did, but they're back up to the Orange Level Two at thirty-nine point three. So just to give you an idea where we are. So that leaves us to questions, comments, and concerns.
Well, we got two counties that are in red that have put up against this town.
Right. It's, it's rampant in Pompa City. And when we, we see there's new cases, we feel it in the schools. Now, here's one thing, uh, another observation that we have seen. Some of our students will feel bad, they're symptomatic, and then they start, and they'll miss a day of school. Then they start feeling better and they come back to school the next day. And it's usually twenty-four hours. If they're positive, they're going to start feeling bad again. And then they then at school, they're, and they're infectious. So with you and parents, if your kids are symptomatic, take them for a COVID test and do not send them to school until you get the test results. So, um, tomorrow, I'm planning on doing a video to discuss some of those concerns. And we're going to encourage, we can only control what goes on in school and our events. So we will encourage people to limit those large gatherings and distance. And it can be done. It's deliberate and it's purposeful. We did it for it.
As, as a follow-up to what you just said, and this is for a question for Delana. I know for fact that there are students that will go to school not feeling real good because of the attendance policy getting out of their finals if they have X number or fewer. And I don't know what the numbers are, two or fewer absences during the calendar year. Have we done anything about that on attendance? To encourage them to stay home with their sick?
It's exempted this month.
Yes.
The final attendance policy has been waived.
Do they know that though?
Yes, we publicized it, but then academic council, um, over nine, but we can get it out there again. They can just publicize it.
We probably need to do that. And you know what? I'll do that on my video tomorrow too. And then let's get a press release to Mary.
Because I know in the past, pre-COVID, a lot of kids went to school not feeling real good so they could get out of the final.
Right, right.
Holding the grade, whatever their current average was going into. So we definitely don't want them to come to school sick.
No.
If that was an intervention.
That was brought up at academic council, um, of September.
Yeah, we talked about it early.
Yeah.
Alright, any further questions, discussions?
Anybody have any questions? Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which assessed up the minutes from the last meeting and contracts under ten thousand. Where we normally have forty or fifty contracts, we only had six this time, which is good.
I'm going to approve.
Okay, we have a bunch to approve. Real quickly, I'll mention them. We had, uh, commercial washing machine at East, software to manage Google accounts, software to help with distance learning, and that was coming out of closure dollars. One thing here, and I think this is important. We had looked at an option for medical transport for employees. It's no cost to the district, but it's going to be available to all employees at like fourteen dollars a month, whether it be ambulance, air vac, or whatever, for the entire family. And that's going to be an offering. I think Curtis is going to put something out on it, assuming it's approved. And then we'll come out and payroll be done. So that's a pretty good deal of fourteen dollars a month for an insurance policy to take you wherever that you got to go, whether by ambulance or by air vac. Uh, we have a warranty for our servers and for the UPS. And that's the only ones we really have.
And wherever you're at.
Huh?
You don't have to. It could be anywhere you're at in the country.
Oh, it's not just Pompa City?
Correct.
It makes it matter. Near city, you still get.
You have a card or something that you show? Yeah.
Yeah, you can contact them.
Show them that card and they, there's different services throughout the state.
And so they'll take you to wherever near as medical facility needs to be.
No, they'll take you anywhere, doesn't matter. Just they cover, they cover any kind of transportation.
So, Mr. Riley, if, if this is approved, then you'll open up to our employees tomorrow? Okay, sometime?
I have to get them to sign a contract.
Got it. Got it.
Then he'll set up, he can't set up his part, and we have a, can agree with the rest.
I believe we had a vote, uh, motion for approval from Don and a second from Nancy. Comments or questions? All in favor, or call for votes, do a minute.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
Aye.
Motion carries, number seven. Action item, consider and take action on the following district financial reports. Don and I talked about all of these, um, in our sub-meeting earlier, or last week. Uh, A through L. The other one is the ratification and approval of the payrolls, which Curtis always thinks is important. So I have a motion from Don, and I have a second.
I'll second.
Second from Nancy. Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
I have a question, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, on the Oyster Club, I'm sorry, Mr. Club under, there's, say something happens and we stop school. That gets shut right then and there? Correct, okay. Sorry, I should have asked. Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye. Motion carries, number two. Uh, number two is the annual setting of our school board meetings. Uh, we want to recommend once more time to continue the meetings on the second Monday of each month, except for the July one, because of the Fourth of July will be the third Monday of that month. So anybody have any questions about the meeting schedule? This is a requirement that we have to give to the county group of the new cur.
But I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Nancy and a second from?
David.
David. Call for the vote.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Number three, consider and take action to accept kids for three buses for two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. These are propane-powered school buses. And if I remember right, we have a grant that gets us about fifty percent of this money back.
It's pretty close to it. They, they'll grant up to fifty percent. I think our share's going to be a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Motion approved. So we have a motion from Don, a second from David. Comments or questions?
That's awesome.
Call for the vote.
Mrs. Zimmershi? Aye. Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carries, number four, consider and take action on new revised board policies. Shelley had covered some of these, Brett, Curtis, others, in the last board meeting. We had a couple minor word changes on a couple of them, uh, that we've talked to Shelley about. Uh, she has no problem changing those. And unless someone, we had no comments from the public on any of the board policy changes. Most of it was to meet the requirements by the legislature, the federal laws for funding, et cetera. So unless anybody has any questions, comments, I'd ask for a motion to approve number four.
I'm going to approve number four.
Have a motion from David, second from?
Second.
Don, call for the vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
Aye.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Motion carries, number five. This is a late addition for a board policy we would have included the last time. We didn't have, didn't get it in time. It has to do with the foster care plan. And it really says that basically foster care provisions under the title of the ESSA require the state department of education, the local education authority to collaborate with the child welfare services. If anybody's got any questions, Terry's here to explain this. But it's basically just wording that says the way foster children will be treated.
It hits the law and we needed the policy on file for our upcoming, um, federal programs audit.
Need for approval. Have a motion from Don to approve, second. Comment, third, second from David. Call for the vote.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
Aye.
Motion carries, number six. And I believe we do need an executive session, a motion to vote to convene an executive session for the following purposes, discuss the possible terminations, reassignments, resignation, employment personnel, and attached detailed personnel report that we all had in our package, to discuss the purchase and appraisal of real property, to discuss negotiations, and to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney, consenting pending claims and litigation. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
And a motion from Don, a second from?
Second.
David, call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
Aye.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are in executive session. Okay, we will return to regular open session. Uh, number ten, consider and take action on recommendations for the termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel.
We forgot number nine. About transfer.
Oh, that's okay. Let's do number ten, let's get it, and then we'll go back to number nine. Uh, I need a motion to approve number ten.
Motion approved.
Second, motion from Don, second from David. Call for the vote.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Now we'll go back up to number nine. Consider and take action on memorandum of understanding to the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one negotiated agreement for epidemic, pandemic leave. Our current policy addresses administration on how we'll have leave paid during an epidemic or a pandemic. But it will take a memorandum of understanding to include it into the negotiating agreement for the, uh, support and regular certified employees. Is that correct, understanding?
Support will follow, you're in the support.
Yeah, I mean, it's same policy, but we have to put it in the memorandum of understanding in the negotiating agreement.
Yes.
To make it work. Everybody understand that? So I'll look for a motion to approve number nine.
I'm going to make a motion.
Motion from David.
I'll second.
Second from Nancy. Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Number eight, new business. Shelley, do we have any new business?
We do have new business. And, and based on the number of isolations and quarantines at Pohai, I am proposing that we move, that we pivot to distance learning, Pohai only, beginning Wednesday, November eleventh through Tuesday, November twenty-fourth. Not closing school, pivoting to distance learning. Tomorrow, we'll give the opportunity for students to get their Chromebooks, hotspots, or anything else that they may need to be successful with distance learning. If our teachers are not on quarantine, they will come in the building to teach. That's where their resources are.
Okay, by policy, several months ago, we gave Shelley the authority to close down a single site. And we're considering the high school a single site. So we won't need a motion, we won't need a vote on this. This is her authority, responsibility to close down. So to make sure everybody understands that, what she's doing is proposing from Wednesday, the eleventh, through Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of November, to do distance learning, no attendance from students at Pohai grades nine through twelve.
Correct.
We will not need to vote on that. Okay, now with that said, we, the board also in that same policy decision, talked about how to do extracurricular sporting activities, et cetera. After a very long discussion, what we've decided, the board collectively has decided to do is during the same time period, the eleventh of November through the twenty-fourth of November, and I'm going to ask for a motion here in a minute on this one, that we will allow competitive activities that are previously scheduled to continue. So in essence, activities that have already been scheduled. There are several swimming meets, there's a football game coming up, potentially Friday, maybe another one the following Friday, depending on how we do. We just felt that it was best to give these student athletes the opportunity to go ahead and finish out their careers or to get their career started, to do what they want. So in essence, what this means is all off-season sports, all non-competitive scheduled competitions will not be allowed to practice from the eleventh of November through the twenty-fourth of November. Okay, does everybody understand what we're, we're getting ready to vote on?
I make a motion to approve that, aye.
Okay, Don has made a motion to approve basically what I just explained. Do you understand enough, Jan, or did I need you to repeat?
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay, you've got it down?
I second it.
And I've got a second from David. Call for the vote.
Dr. Ken Kay?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershi?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Motion carries.
Now, and, and I do want to clarify something. If a student is in quarantine, that's in one of those scheduled competitions, it's, they follow the Pompa City Public Schools.
Which we already have a policy on quarantine. Which is the fourteen days on a quarantine or ten days if you test positive.
It, it, it is a government agency order.
Right, that's probably CDC guidelines.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion from Don to adjourn in a second.
Second.
David, call for the vote.